Please rise for a moment of silent prayer and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rule four.
Trey here.
Here.
Keith here.
Addy.
Here.
Elder.
Here.
Libel. How do you say that? Oh, it's a joke, okay. Reese here, asleep.
You never trust the Trump.
Stay.
I see that. Yeah, see, I'm not talking to you.
Okay, council has a copy of the minutes from the last meeting, which we didn't have a meeting in the beginning of July, so it'll be the June, end of June minutes. Are there any corrections to those minutes?
No.
Wise has two S's.
Pardon?
Wise has two S's.
My last name. It was missing an S, but it's not that far.
It's the last letter of the report.
Anyways, Stevie will fix the S. Council also has a copy of the agenda for tonight. Are there any additions to the agenda? No, then we'll get started with the readings.
Second reading of an ordinance amending chapter 1127 of codified ordinances of the city of Fremont entitled Use Classification Tables.
We're letting these go for all of your readings. So that constitutes the second reading of that ordinance.
Second reading of an ordinance amending chapter 1129 of codified ordinances of the city of Fremont entitled Use Specific Regulations.
That constitutes the second reading of that ordinance.
Second reading of the ordinance amending chapter 1131 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fremont entitled Accessory Use Regulations.
Madam President, I apologize because we were running around and we weren't ready for this meeting, but I was going to ask you to suspend Rule 4 because we had an LRO meeting, the first meeting in June. We had our first reading, or first reading of the ordinance at our second meeting in June. We didn't have a meeting on July 3rd, and so this would have been our third reading, and it helps us stay in line with the schedule we had put together. And it's still in the spirit of what the three readings are meant to do. We still have had three public discussions about it.
I move to suspend Rule 4.
Just a second.
Do you want these for the other two as well?
Yeah, for all of them. Can we do that? Because we already.
I was really hoping.
We already went through it.
Yeah, we already went through them.
So we can do 3 and 4.
All right. You can do 2, 3, and 4?
No.
No, 3 and 4.
Just do 3 and 4 then.
I move to suspend.
I second the motion.
I think you're going to want to.
Kill you want.
Jim Slick moves to suspend Rule 4. Angie Reese, second. Any further questions about the suspension of Rule 4? Rule call.
Leaf, yes. Addy.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese, yes. Sleep.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
John Elder moves to adopt. First, I vote second. Any further questions about this ordinance? No? Okay, rule call.
Addy.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese, yes. Sleep.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Leaf, yes.
Approved.
Second reading of an ordinance amending chapter 1179 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fremont entitled Terminology.
Move to suspend Rule 4.
Second.
John Elder moves to suspend Rule 4. First, I vote second. Any questions on the suspension of Rule 4? Rule call.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese, yes. Sleep.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Leaf, yes. Addy.
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
Move to.
Angie. Angie Reese moves to adopt. First, I vote second. Any further discussions? Rule call.
Libel.
Yes.
Leaf, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Leaf, yes. Addy.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Approved.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to amend the Position Classification Plan and Employee Compensation Plan for BU, AFSCME employees to include building maintenance specialists.
Is there anybody?
I can speak on that position.
Okay.
They're just looking at making some changes to one of the positions, I believe it's in the U.S., to change the title of that position. We're not asking you to suspend Rule 4. Ken can give you a presentation or an explanation of specifically what that's going to do.
Okay. All right. Well, that constitutes the first reading of that ordinance.
First reading of a resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare, sign, and enter into contracts for submission to the Ohio Public Works Commission for the State Capital Improvement Program, ACIP, and the Local Transportation Improvement Program, LTIP, and only for project funding and declaring an emergency.
Not asking to suspend Rule 4.
No. Okay. Constitutes the first reading of that resolution. Next.
First reading of an ordinance amending appropriations within General Fund 101, Municipal Income Tax Fund 201, and declaring an emergency.
Asking to suspend.
I'll make a motion to suspend Rule 4. Second.
John Elder makes a motion to suspend Rule 4. Jim Slick, second. Any further discussion on the suspension of Rule 4?
We did get an explanation from the auditor.
Yes.
Yep.
Rule call.
Reese, yes. Sleep.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Leaf, yes. Addy.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
I second.
Seth Fraser moves to adopt. Angie Reese, second. Any further comments or questions on this? Rule call.
Sleep.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Leaf, yes. Addy.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese, yes. First reading of an ordinance authorizing a fund transfer in the amount of $600,000 for the city of Fremont, state of Ohio, declaring an emergency.
Madam President, we are also asking to suspend Rule 4 this. I believe the auditor did prepare a report as well, and we do, we would like to give a report to council as this, as we're very excited to bring this to council tonight. Yes, go ahead, sorry.
Is this the ordinance that Chief Paul Beison wants to speak about?
It was. We were planning on doing that at the beginning of the meeting, and that's okay.
I asked and no one said.
I know. Things were, they were having some technical difficulties, so I was trying to.
We were looking under the keyboard for the password. Under somewhere else.
Ten push-ups.
We, Ken, would you like us to give a presentation before you vote? Okay. Chief, are you prepared?
Yeah. Chief Winstone, and then I'll.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Counsel?
Very exciting project. To preface, some of the things that Chief Paul Beison is going to discuss, all along in these communications or meetings that we've been having, we thought it would be good to talk about some of the other collaborations that we've done. So really, it's collaboration, interoperability, and communication. And really, this couldn't have, we couldn't be here talking about the successes that we've had without all the support that we've had, mainly from people that are in this room, well, most inside. Mr. Frost isn't here. Mayor Sanchez is here. These guys have created a lot of the rooms and the meetings that turned into groups, that turned into projects, that turned real ideas into real things. And I'm going to explain it in a minute. Also, Auditor Paul Graul and Law Director Jim Malley, you know, we want things funded legally. Advice from all kinds of places went into these projects. And lastly, or I guess maybe most importantly, this council has been here all along the way, talked to constituents, voting, debating here, and having legislations in your hand that really turn money into products, real things. And the first thing I would point to is the MCRT, CISM, MHRSB. Now, that's a lot of just acronyms, right? And some of you and some of the people in this room and some of us that work with it daily know exactly what that means. Well, it's the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board. This council very recently took money from opiate-funded, put it in the hands of that mental health services board. That board put policemen and firemen from the city into mental health management training services. I mean, real rubber to the road, so to speak, from this council to our safety services. The Mobile Crisis Response Team is something that we've collaborated with. Mobile Crisis Response Team are trained individuals in the city of Fremont, actually piloted in Sandusky County through the Mental Health Board, and that went into the four county areas, Seneca, Sandusky, Alamo Wood, and now also Huron County, specially trained mental health professionals that go out and help people in crisis. They are able to stay longer than like a law enforcement officer would during a person that's in crisis. You know, having trouble with your mental health shouldn't get you in trouble. So it's a great component. We use it all the time in the city of Fremont and all over. And who knows, without the support that this city has given that program at its inception, you know, how successful it would be. I'm here to tell you today that that was a very successful collaboration that probably going to reach further than, or has reached further than, just this five-county area. Critical Incident Stress Management Service is a service provided by the Mental Health Board that we have utilized at Fremont PD and Fremont Fire and several other places. It is an intervention protocol developed specifically for dealing with traumatic events. So I think an employee at a company in this city commits suicide during the workday, that exposes a lot of people to things that they're not, you know, nobody should be exposed to, and their group counseling sessions essentially. Think multiple fatal crash that we've recently experienced, police officers sit in a room with trained professionals to start die decima. And without this council's support and the collaboration with the Mental Health Board, who knows if those programs would be here and/or this successful. One of my favorite collaborations is SRT, the Special Response Team. You know, what is that? You know, it used to be called SWAT, Special Weapons and Tactics. Well, now we're using tactical teams in a lot different ways. It's 2025, and this has been a gradual shift to a better way to use, you know, tactical officers. You know, these are barricaded subjects, search warrants, sometimes pursuits. There's been presidential visits to the city and this area that these teams have been utilized in. Big protest issues that we've put these guys on standby for. And as a city, you know, we have three right now, soon to be five, officers that have the specialized training to attach to this team so that when this city needs it, you know, we have access to 20 trained officers. This is a huge return in the investment that we made in this agreement to be a part of the Special Response Team. And, you know, we are training up our officers, those that are attached to it and others, but when we, when we need something extra that Fremont PD would strain us very much to provide, this resource is a fantastic resource to have. And that's our law enforcement partners with Sandusky County Sheriff's, Clyde, Bellevue, Woodville, Gibsonburg, and Creed's Farms. So two pretty big programs followed by another one, I guess, you know, all these law enforcement programs are my favorite. I love this cop stuff, right? So the Sandusky County Drug Task Force has been, the city of Fremont has been instrumental in getting this program off the ground. When the task force was first, you know, in its infancy, as the levy was dialing up, we staffed the city of Fremont Police Department and now Commander Dean Bliss assigned a detective to it full-time. And they started working on mid-level, high, mid-to-high level, you know, drug investigations in the city and in this area. Another example of the city of Fremont being at the beginning of a program that's really done a lot of work in the city. And it spun off to several other things the Drug Task Force has. They help, they're directly connected to the Mental Health Board. Commander Dean Bliss sits on the Mental Health Board. They do Bridge. There's a program that is Bridge that the Drug Task Force operates or participates in, and it's, I think it's nationwide, it's a pretty big program, but it has two concepts, and it's grant-funded, it's grant reimbursement-funded. And they do education days. Like a couple days ago, we were in Walsh Park with a bunch of vendors, giving people an opportunity to come, walk past vendor tables, talk to law enforcement officers. And, you know, it can be families of people dealing with addiction, or it can be the people dealing with addiction. It's an easier space to walk in sometimes and have some options in front of you rather than, you know, calling up or going somewhere, just targeting somebody else, you know, to come to that table that day. Now, hand-in-hand with that, we have Bridge Enforcement Days. And on Bridge Enforcement Days, we have somewhere between 15 and 20, depending on the operation of law enforcement officers in different areas. Most recently, we had one in Fremont where there was like 17 officers, four from Fremont, four from Sandusky County Sheriff's Office, the whole Drug Task Force Board, OSP officers, and we target high complaint areas. We target known suspects or players in cases that we know that we're trying to make cases on. So it's the enforcement side and the education side to bring really the, you know, make trouble for the drug business, right? And finally, our Joint Dispatch Center. And I think it was 2019 when the city of Fremont joined with our Dispatch Center. And there's pros and cons to every collaboration, but overwhelmingly, like, this is a fantastic service. It's cost savings. All of these programs have a connection to this Marx radio system. When we talk about our SRT team, when our officers go out, they have a radio that is supplied by the sheriff. If there's a deployment in the city, our radios in our cars can't directly talk with officers on that deployment team. So over time, I guess, to summarize these other programs, over time, there have been steps towards better communication, interoperability, and this is just the next step. And when Chief Paul Beison comes up and starts filling in the blanks on what actually Marx is, we're going to key you in on some of the timing issues, why this might not have been in a budget, you know, 2025 year budget versus 2026, or why, you know, it's important now. Okay?
Okay.
Any questions so far?
No.
All right. One of the other things that I forgot to mention, I can't believe I did. One of my other favorite things through our partnership with the Drug Task Force is a $300,000 over the next three years project that costs $0 to the city of Fremont. It's an LPR flock camera system, an automatic license plate reader system that sends notices to on-duty officers for, like, nationwide notices. Think Amber Alert, or if there was a hit skip somewhere, they can input it into this and we can get direct notices when these cars drive by fixed position license plate readers. But more on that, that program is just getting out of its feet. So I'll invite Chief Paul Beison up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I want to thank you, just starting off, I think, thanking you for letting us come here and speak today. The opening statement that Chief Winstone did kind of painted a picture for everybody to understand the collaborations that we have done over the recent years with other organizations to help benefit not only the citizens of Fremont, but also, you know, the individuals like us that work, work with. So the nuts and bolts of why we're here is the Marx radio system that we're trying to move forward to. What Marx is, is a multi-agency radio communication system. It's a, the state of Ohio runs Marx. And what they do is, it's a, it's a radio platform based off of P-25 radios, which is, P-25 is Project 25. It's a nationwide standard for radio communication. So we had an amazing slideshow set up for you guys, but I'm going to do my best to paint pictures for you with my words. Some of it might be difficult, but we'll work through. So the Marx system is roughly about 25 years old, and it's used already in Sandusky County and has been since approximately 2017 by county fire departments, by the Sheriff's Department, EMS, and then county EMA. They were involved in a grant back in 2017 that allowed them, a lot of the departments to make a conversion over. Reason why we didn't get involved with that grant at the time is because we had some investments already taking place within our radio system upgrades that we were, we had already invested in. So at that point, it wasn't feasible for us to jump on board with the project because of the money that we had invested in radios, repeaters, and some things like that on a digital system. So, but as far as Marx goes, there's more than 3,000 agencies within the state of Ohio that are currently utilizing the Marx system. So the takeaway from that is it's a tried and true system that's been in place for, you know, quite some time, keeping communities safe across the state of Ohio. So the current communication gaps that we have with our system that we're utilizing is there's no unified pathway to talk to one another. Him and I are, my employees, his employees on scene. His employees are us with EMS, with Sheriff's Office, or anything that we do a joint collaboration with. We're relying on dispatch to relay information from point A to dispatch to point B and then back again. Doing so, there's, there's gaps, there's possibilities for miscoordination, and then also, you know, a possibility for safety concern. So that's, that's kind of the communication gaps that we've been dealing with, and we've done a great job dealing with them, but it's, it's come to the point where it's not, it's not really feasible for us to not advance this into the system. We kind of ran out of reasons why we haven't done it yet, aside from the funding.
Yeah, there are no reasons to wait.
There really are. Equipment limitations that we have, like I said, we transitioned in roughly 2017 as well with our digital system, but at that time, the radios that we purchased were second-hand radios. They were used radios. We got a deal on them, that's why we did the transition at that time. Police radios are slightly newer, I think 2019, but the vendors for these digital radios are starting to not support the radios. Just small things like key knobs and programming and things of that nature, batteries, stuff like that. It's getting more and more difficult to find fixes for, for the older radios. So those are, those are two equipment limitations. We also, we've also noticed some geographical dead zones within the city just based off the limitations of the radio system, like the valley area of the city, South Bay Avenue. Given the weather and certain other situations, we sometimes get dead zones in areas of the city. And then the big shining target on what we're currently utilizing is the lack of the interoperability. Our radios do not have the capability to speak with the people that we work with on a day-to-day basis.
And so I might explain a little bit, so what does this look like? Like, what is a Marx radio look like? Well, to just, most people, when they look at a police officer, a fireman, or an EMT, they'll see just a radio, right? They look very similar from what the digital UHF band radios that we have right now to the Marx radio. The Marx radios are slightly bigger, there are screens on them, there's more channels on them, there's banks of channels. On our radio right now, the average policeman, he'll spin a dial nine to nine spots, and it'll be Fremont PD. Fremont PD has like three other channels, then it'll be Sandusky County Central, which is, Sandusky County Central is no longer utilized by Sandusky County to dispatch anything. And then there's a Clyde PD station, and then at the end, there's an SRT channel. Well, we don't use that SRT channel anymore because our SRT is on the Marx radio system. And when that officer walks and gets into his cruiser, he'll have those same selections on his, the radio that sits in the bank of the, you know, the police console, much like a fireman would have a radio slung in a little pouch and then get into the fire truck. And I haven't ever been inside a fire truck, so.
It's just.
You know, the same radio.
It's the same.
And when we would make a switch to Marx, it would look like the same thing. But in practice, if there are three Sandusky County deputies at a crash and three Fremont police officers, and somebody ran from that crash, those six police officers could not talk to each other because we were on two different systems. So it.
Well, you need to be all on one.
We need to be all on one.
Sure.
So there is an event that happened where there is a kid swimming in the river, six years old, down on, right here on State Street, this was after our train crash here, and we had an ambulance with the kid and EMTs because blue lips, hypothermic, maybe warming him up inside the ambulance. We had officers out on the nearby neighborhood going door-to-door until we found the kid. So the condition of the kid was being updated to dispatch. And, you know, I wouldn't have these examples, but I've had a loner Marx radio sitting on my desk. So I'm sitting at my desk listening to this, thinking EMS just told dispatch that the condition is good, and they might have a first name. An officer just found dad who was sleeping and explained that, that he just fell asleep. So there was a small delay in the communication between the police officer at the door to that EMS with the, with the child. Now, that's not a critical delay, but we can all come up with scenarios that we would want the person in the ambulance providing that medical attention to be able to talk very directly to an officer or a fireman.
Right.
So that's what we're talking about. I mean, thankfully, we don't have a lot of examples of errors that we made. And I'm telling you that I don't have a single example of an error that we made because of that relay. There is just the chance of it. Now, there's things we do to mitigate not having the same radio, and it's quite honestly, for law enforcement, a Fremont police officer standing next to a deputy so we could both hear our radios and feel this. And that's something that maybe somebody saw when they went down to, you know, this train event. I don't mean to keep referencing that. I have several other ones that are easy, you know, to wrap our heads around. Since I've been a Fremont police officer here in the city, there was a jail inmate escaped. So some inmates took advantage of an issue in the jail, and all of a sudden, we had a lot of law enforcement all over the place, and we could talk about a third of them directly. Now, we could relay, we can relay information, but we're looking at the best way to do things. And this next thing, this Marx radio project is the next thing. You know, we talked about briefly the Joint Dispatch Center. And along with the Joint Dispatch Center, we got the same report management software as the Sandusky County Sheriff. And what that does, it ties us electronically to our MDTs to other deputies, so we can message them on a keyboard. But you can't really message somebody if you're not in your, like, there's some limitations to it.
Sure.
Right? And that's not the same as radio traffic.
You guys have just figured out how to do what you've got to do with what you've got.
We have been mitigating it with different reasons, different methods. It is just time.
Yeah.
Moving to the new century.
So moving on a little bit, some of the things that you referenced, like, I had some examples in here. Sandusky County EMS, they have a magnitude of calls annually. About 3,500 of those calls are within the city limits of Fremont, roughly. That's thirty, that's roughly 10 times a day that there's citizens of Fremont being helped, which we often run on those calls as well. We do first responder assistance with Sandusky County EMS. They typically go as well for, you know, if there's a well, it's a call, crash, anything. That's 10 times a day we can't talk to other responders that are going to the same scene, on the way to the scene. You know, a lot of things can happen in the two to three minutes it takes us to respond, shootings, suicide, that kind of thing, that we need to be informed of on the way. So that's just another obvious reason that we need to have this interoperability between the agencies that we work with.
Chief, just, just real quick, you know, just moving past some of those scenarios and things like that, I think council crashed the seriousness of it. You know, first and foremost, I want to commend both of you for obviously bringing this to my attention. And as Chief Winstone stated, we've been taking numerous steps over the past seven to eight years to, the previous chiefs had a different plan moving forward than the two current chiefs. Having the new chiefs. Having the new chiefs, things like, with these two being able to work on this as long as we've had. We've applied for several grants over the last several years to look at upgrading the system as we were doing consolidated dispatch and all of the other things that Chief Wensner stated, and we've been unsuccessful. But we do currently have a hundred thousand dollar grant out there that we're hopeful that we might receive. One other thing that's important for council to know is the cost of the system, when the county first went to it, it's seventy-five percent cheaper today than it was several years ago. So although this cost is a, a lot of money upfront, this has not been a fly-by-night project. This has been very strategically planned and talked about for a great length of time amongst the law enforcement agency, the fire department. Also, Lisa Kaling, our EMA director, has been wonderful, and Sheriff Hill has been amazing as well. So it's been a very, very, we've spent a lot of hours, a lot of time, a lot of time in meetings preparing to, we're, these, these two, I know, they're, they're, they're doing a great job presenting, but just today in the office, I think, or today, actually, I can't remember, they're very, very excited about coming here and being able to, we, we kind of joked and said, we are making changes, we've made changes in the city for beyond our tenure, all of us, as a council, as an administration, and as a police chief. And these are astronomical costs and projects, but, you know, there's pros and cons with anything. With consolidated dispatch, we lost the person at the front door that you're able to see. But what you're also gonna have out of this is remember, even then, when you called 911 then, when we had our own dispatch, it went to the PD, then the PD had to call the county, then the county sent to EMS. So there was a delay even on the, the EMS being sent to your house that way. Imagine if you're a dispatcher today. You know, if you're a dispatcher today, you, you gotta be able to translate this information from deputy to police chief. When you hear the voice of the officer who maybe sounds a little frantic, that dispatcher still has to remain calm for a collective because they have to get that information over to the deputy. And at the same time, when you're in a uniform and you're getting that call, you react based on the call from the dispatcher. So if the dispatcher isn't acting, you know, kind of frantic, then you don't think it's that big of a deal, and then the officer later might be like, well, they didn't sound like it was that much of an emergency. You know, so we're asking council to suspend Rule 4 tonight. The reason why we're asking is because this is a six-month implementation process. So we're hopeful that we can get this done in the next six months, so that we, both chiefs and the Safety Service Director can start to move forward with the collaborating process. As the chief mentioned, having Sandusky, collaborating with Sandusky County IT has been great for the city of Fremont. All that we have to prove of that, that department is fully aware of all the operational upgrades and changes, not only from the, from the, not only from a Marx radio perspective, but also with the implementation process. So a lot of time, a lot of effort.
And specifically to the Marx radios.
Agreed, to the Marx radios. So.
So I'm gonna ask real quick.
Yep, go ahead.
To the chiefs and you guys, is that a hundred thousand dollar grant, is it set there available right now?
No, we don't, we haven't received it. We budgeted tonight for the high cost.
Yeah.
For the cost of what it costs and that potential hundred thousand. It may, we can't tell you tonight it's gonna be a hundred thousand dollars less. We're hopeful that it's gonna be a hundred thousand dollars less. But I think one of the things that I talked to about the chiefs is when we look at this cost, some of you weren't on council then, but remember what that upgrade would have been to that PD for the antiquated dispatch system? We were looking at 500, 750,000 dollars just in an upgrade for that, not including, you know, the personnel costs that we would have been spending still as well. Yeah, we still were contracting, we're paying, but we're getting more big for our buck. You know, we've lost, there's been some cons as far as not having that person at the window to, to say hello or to answer the phone. However, they've made major improvements in being able to get ahold of people, you know.
And again, it's reduced in price from how.
The, the monthly service fees are reduced about 75%. They started right around $25 a month, or 20 to 25 dollars a month.
So the timing couldn't be any better to spend the money to get this done.
In saying that as well, there's been legislation at the state level to possibly incorporate the monthly fees for state of Ohio users into the state budget. Dewine would like to do that. It was pushed real hard about a year and a half ago, kind of died down a little bit, so we'll see where we end up. But there is talk at the state that it would just become a budgetary item at the state level, and we will have no problem.
I don't think any of us will approve, Madam President. I move to suspend Rule 4.
Second.
Jim Slick moves to suspend Rule 4, and John Elder second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the objection.
I would have loved to seen the slideshow.
I'll be glad.
We can email that out.
He wants some popcorn.
Yeah, go crash mine.
Any further questions about the suspension of Rule 4? Roll call.
Fraser.
Yes.
Reese. Yes. Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libo.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Slick.
Yes.
John Elder.
Second.
Any further questions or comments on this? Roll call.
Reese.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libo.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Slick.
Yes.
First reading of an ordinance determining 1992 Grooman fire engine is not needed for the municipal purposes, and therefore Fremont City Council agrees to donate it to Vanguard Sentinel Career and Technology Center for the benefit and welfare of the citizens of the city of Fremont and declaring an emergency.
Madam President?
Yes.
So originally, I was asked if we had to take this to council. It looked like we did not, but though I looked at the actual co-sex that applies to property, even if it's a donation, we have to bring it to council and have the legislative authority to go over it.
Yeah, well, it's just basically because any kind of property that you're gonna donate has to be brought through the legislature and council as well.
What initially you thought, because it was the school?
Yeah, because it was the school, we didn't have to. Correct.
Vanguard doing what? I'll go.
It actually went, it actually went today down to Atlantic Safety Services in Finley to get all the repairs done to it for the school, which the school's covering, obviously that cost. But they're gonna utilize it for their Fire 1, Fire 2 program. There's, they have always had the adult education program here in Fremont. They're starting a high school level program at Sentinel, which they have intentions to move up here next year. So that's what the truck's gonna be utilized for is up here. It may be utilized down there initially, but as soon as the program comes back to Fremont, it'll be here, sold to here and used for that. Those two classes, the adult education class and the lower-level high school.
Your department utilizes Vanguard regularly.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, you're always out there.
Most, no, I would say most, I would say a lot of my, my employees are Vanguard instructors. We have a deep collaboration with Vanguard, always have been. I've been an instructor through there since 2002. So we've always collaborated really well with them, with the class. It's always a great partnership.
What condition is this 1992 Grooman?
It, it was, I mean, it's, it's an old truck. It still functions, everything, you know, the main functions of the truck still work. One of the big issues that we had with it is we, we utilize it for the mass casualty incident on the turnpike a few winters ago. The main reason why I had that truck out is because of its age. Knowing the sub-zero temperatures, knowing what we might be out there for a while, we did not take the newer truck out and use that as a personnel vehicle to get them out there. It sat out there for a solid six hours plus. So there's some leaking valves that, you know, they had, we had some freezing happen which damaged some of the valves. That's what they're fixing down at Atlantic now. Once they get that stuff taken care of, we had an issue with the governor on the pump because of that issue, the freezing temperatures as well. They're getting that taken care of once those things are fixed. It'll be a fully operational truck. It was just timed out for us with our cycle that we do for our trucks. It was a, you know, a 30-year-old plus truck that had been replaced a few years back, and we just held on to it knowing that there's a possibility of Vanguard. Working with them so closely, we knew that this project was in the works, and then, so I held on to it. I didn't put it on gov deals right away. We stored it out at the water tower. Big thank you to the water department for allowing us to do that. And we stored it out there until they were ready for it. So that's when we took it out.
Make a motion to suspend Rule 4?
Second.
Okay, John Elder makes a motion.
Thank you, Chief.
To suspend Rule 4. Angie Reese seconds. Any questions about the suspension of Rule 4? Roll call.
Abby.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libo.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Slick.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
I move to, uh...
Pam, second.
Angie Reese moves to adopt. Jim Slick, second. Any further comments or questions? Roll call.
Elder.
Yes.
Libo.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Slick.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Abby.
Yes.
First reading of a resolution authorizing enterprise zone agreement, the improvement into, between city of Fremont and KFB JHI LLC and declaring an emergency.
Madam President, I'm just gonna take a minute or two to talk about enterprise zones. And then, this is really a Tom Hurner, not a Hurner project, and he'll come up and then talk to me about the project. We have recently used enterprise zones. The last enterprise zone agreement we used was in 2018 for the Easter Seals Building. It is a common practice in economic development, but if you remember, in 2019, we expanded the CRA to be citywide. That was 100% abatement, and that was really effective for us. But when we annexed property and re-zoned the industrial park, we had the decision, should we expand our CRA, which is 100% abatement, or we go back to the more traditional route of using enterprise zone agreements? And we thought, well, why don't we stay our last amendment for CRA, go back to the traditional route of utilizing enterprise zone agreements? And then that still allows the school to get an increase or improper tax, they'll still get the same amount, and then they still get a payment of taxes and the 25%. So, so that kind of is why we're here, specifically on paper, you talk about an enterprise zone agreement. This is a first reading. I'm not asking you to suspend Rule 4. In fact, I want it to go all through readings because there's, you know, we need to get resolutions from schools and county commissioners, and it's just a timing thing that we got some work to do over the next 30 days. But I'd ask, as this, this time gets up, I'm gonna invite Tom up here just a second to talk about the project. I've also invited Beth Hanlon from Sandusky County, Nicky Wood Development Corp. She has helped me out, or helped the city out in marketing and following up on some of these leads that we have. She is here to lend her support to this project and this agreement. And if you have questions about, you know, what you hear tonight, it's always good to have an extra resource that can lend their support and their experience to hopefully be able to answer the questions you have. But this time, we're gonna have Tom come up and talk about his project.
So I think in front of you, you'll find a sheet that's got, that looks sort of like that. It's got another page stapled on the back of it. So if you just look at that sheet, this is your new industrial park. This is Opportunity Drive, as you see running down there. And this is the west side, this building that's drawn in the middle is to the west side. So today, basically, we're announcing to you guys, sort of first, we've not made a public announcement about this project, but because the idea of this project is a really fast-track project, we have to move with all these things that we've gotta get in place to make it possible for this to happen. So, you know, kinda, one by one, we're figuring out catch by catch, can, who we gotta catch and when we can catch them to get these things approved. So I'll just give you kind of the background, take you back a year, year and a half when we were, when Bob and myself and Beth helping us, but the Fremont Development Corporation was basically in the process of completing your new industrial park, which 123 acres plus or minus of new industrial property with the idea of creating 1,000 new jobs over five to 10 years. So similar to Bar Creek. If you think about Bar Creek, there's 900 or some jobs at Bar Creek today. Bar Creek's 25 years, I guess now, or longer in the making, but there are nearly 1,000 jobs at Bar Creek. There's been times when there's been more than that, but today, it's around 900 jobs. So that's kind of our dream for this. If you remember your 10-year plan, your 10-year plan kind of calls for the city to grow. That's what sort of motivated the need for an industrial park there today, short of this industrial park. There's one site that I know of inside of the city limits of Fremont that's 10 or more acres. This site happens to be 16 acres, and this project happens to be 100,000 square foot building. So it's the largest spec building we've ever built in this market. But it's more traditionally what's being built today as compared to 10 years ago. 10 years ago, most spec builders were building 75, 80,000 square foot buildings. Today, most of them are built in the 100,000 square foot range, so that's what we chose. I'll tell you a little bit about how this partnership works. This partnership is basically, it's simple, easy to understand, it's a 50-50 partnership between KF Ventures, Clyde Ohio, Fremont Ohio, I live in Fremont, so whatever. But anyway, it's KF Ventures 50%, it's Giannata and Hurner Incorporated out of Monroeville, Ohio, 50%. So we're equal partners in this new LLC that's gonna build this project. The project, construction cost is between 6.2 and 7 million dollars. The land is cost to an additional million dollars to do the project. We have a proposal in front of the Fremont Development Corporation for how this transaction can be completed. We have applied for 15-year 100% tax abatement on the project. That stuff is in the hands of the schools. The schools do need to approve that. That cannot, cannot be approved for 15 years without the schools taking specific action on it. So there, there will be specific action over the next couple of weeks. So, timing of the project and why now, why not later, all of that sort of stuff. So the Development Corporation, Juan Vice President, Bob's President, all, you know, we all kind of know who that is and what that is. It's your development, it's the community's development corporation. You all have funded most of the, most of the project that have went through there. So you have four and a half to five million dollars in this industrial park. So as the Development Corporation officers and board members sat here the last few months trying to figure out, how do we move this forward now? I mean, we, we had a few awkward things, and we had to get resolved so that the park could be completed. That's, most of that stuff's behind us. There's really nothing stopping a project like this, a bigger project, a smaller one. There's nothing to really stop these projects from moving forward now. So we were looking at it, trying to figure out what's the best way to, to get this thing off a dead center? How do we get our first tenant? It's like anything, if you open a subdivision, the first house is usually the hardest to sell. You know, if you put something up for sale, usually the first sale's the hardest if you open a new business, right? So, so anyway, somehow you gotta get started with having this industrial park. So we started talking to two of the largest realtors in the nation, the two that sell about 40% of the real estate across the nation that gets consumed for big, what we call big projects, five, 10 million dollars or greater. Many of them projects are, you know, all the way up to a billion. Many of them projects are, you know, all the way up to a billion dollars today. You know, you see projects way up there in the numbers. So after some interviewing and some soul-searching and talking to various people and so on, we ultimately decided as the Development Corporation to list this property, this entire industrial park, with Jones, Lee, Sal, Lang as the national representative for us. And ultimately, as Janata and I brought this project into our room, we said, we're going to list with them as well and hire them as our listing and promotional agent. So that's who we're partnered up with, so Bob, myself, Beth, and others that'll be helping with the project will all be working with Jones, Lang, and the set. Trust me, that doesn't interfere with anybody bringing a project forward. So any realtor in the market that wants to bring a project forward, it's no different than a house sale. Just because I list your house, doesn't mean I get to sell it. Somebody else frequently sells your house. This works the same way. So if somebody's got a lead, and it's their lead, it's their lead, they'll get paid and they get to participate. So no local brokers are inhibited by this or anything. They're just not the listing broker, because maybe we think they don't have the spot to do this. We work with the leader brokers all the time. We know what that's like. We know what's good about it, and we probably know some of the things that are bad.
Tom, I got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Once they find ABC Company or one of the companies, somebody, they're done, they're done. We pay them one time, right?
Yeah, yeah. So the Development Corporation will pay them a commission if they sell land, if they sell a building, or if they sell a lease. In this business, leases is a big part of it. So about 40% of the properties get sold, about 60% of them end up rented. So leasing is a big part of the action, and that's the hardest part of the business, is understanding all the lease stuff, having an owner that can withstand owning this long-term, not short-term, because it's one thing to build a house, flip it, and get your money back. That's not what that is. When you sign a 10-year lease, you got it. It's yours for the next 10 years.
So you say bring.
Yeah. So that's how that, that's how that works. But everybody gets paid one time when they do something. If they do two somethings, that's how they get paid twice. You know, so, but that's just pretty straightforward and fair. The rates are very reasonable. You know, I have a lot of experience across the nation with leasing stuff like this. I mean, we have probably 20 of these leases across the country, and so we know what it's like out there, we know what the rates are and stuff like that. So, you know, that's part of the value of having me helping you with it, is I can bring some experience to the table. That's all I can do. No two deals are alike, so you know how that goes. Every deal is always different. Everybody's got a twist. Everybody's got something on their mind that they want to accomplish that might be different than what the owner, the developer, or the realtor wants to accomplish. Everybody's, you know, everybody's got a thought, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah. So at any rate, it's pretty exciting, I think, right now, to think that not only can we reduce the whole 125 acres as a new industrial park, ready to go, turnkey, build what you want to build, but we can also say, this building is going into construction in August, assuming all this stuff gets approved, and stuff, we expect to start moving dirt on this job in the middle of August. We would expect to be putting foundations in in September and October, possibly standing steel up as early as December, January. So the proposed completion date on the project, assuming everything goes smooth, we don't have too tough a winter or whatever, you know, this project should be nearly complete, if not 100% complete, in the month of May of next year. So gives us a great opportunity for next year's occupancy season, and a great opportunity now to talk about something that you actually can occupy six or eight months from now. You can actually see the end date when you get it. So it's kind of like building a house. If you have somebody build a house, once that's started, you know you're going to have a house in six months, and so you can kind of follow the progress in that. Well, people that rent or buy things like this are pretty similar. You know, they follow it, they got a lot of planning to do, they got a lot of arranging to do for what's going inside the building. You got a lot of work to do to get the building done, so that they can actually put their physical assets in the building, hire workers, and all of that sort of stuff. So this probably shortens the general timeline by at least four to six months, sometimes longer, depending on what the nature of the project really is. And a lot of people don't know what you got to do to get stuff like this done. So the process for me might be a little shorter. The process for somebody that's never been through it is usually quite a bit longer, and, you know, that can create some angst on people's part as well. Plus, if they're on a timeline, which many of these people have contracts that are leveraged against the work that they're going to do here. So, you know, they need, they need to know that they can meet that timeline. Nothing makes you feel better than to see things coming out of the ground, things starting to happen, you know your timeline. You're not crazy building your plant. You know, you know that your plant's going to get done, you're going to be able to deliver what you promise your customer, whoever, whomever you promise. So that's the beauty of the project. I think it facilitates shortening the time to get our first occupant at the industrial park. So that's really what it's all about. It is a hurried program, so I appreciate you all being willing to take a look at this and that. As Bob said, the three readings, we've looked at the timing. If that happens, we'll be, we'll be fine. It matches up with some of the other dates that we have to meet. We have some other dates that we have to meet as well, because of abatements, because of sales tax payments, some other things. We have a number of other dates that we got to make, plus building permits and all that, which, you know, we're not finished with the design process. I apologize for bringing you a site plan. Tomorrow, there's going to be more of an elevation plan available to city leaders tomorrow morning, and then next week, this stuff will get in front of your approval process and all that, and people will start to look at the, look at the project for what it really is. So the building itself, 6.2 to 7 million, with the rest of the amenities and underground construction stuff has to go with this. The project is nearly an $8 million project. It could be one side or the other of 8 million. We don't have those numbers completely tied down yet. You know, this has only been on the design board for less than three weeks, so. So it's really a fast-track project, but we saw a window of opportunity, and we thought, economy looks pretty good still, things are holding up. If this tariff stuff settles down and stuff a little bit, maybe this is a good window for this to be announced. So, you know, you got the choice, get it done in August, because if you don't get started in August, then you're really not going to start till March. I mean, that's just the way it's going to roll out. I mean, we've done 100 of these, and, you know, when you do them, you just know how they're going to roll out, and so you just can't plan for a lot of production in the wintertime. So that's really the project. How many people could work here? I would say we're hoping for employment plus 100, 100-plus. This is a big building, so, you know, buildings this size, generally speaking, you're going to be looking at 100-plus employees in a building like this. There's always the chance that a logistics person or somebody like that would take advantage of these kinds of opportunities. If they do, the employment's usually a little lower. But the big manufacturing stuff, if we got really good, you know, you could get 150, 200 jobs out of it. So I'm just saying what it can be. We have no, nothing in our pocket. We have no, you know, we have no proposed buyer or user in our pocket, so we're just being honest with you, that we really don't have much in our cup, other than we've got a great team, and we got a lot of confidence that we've done this before, and there's no reason for it not to work out. There are none of these buildings available in northwest Ohio today. So it's an ideal time. Six months ago, we probably wouldn't have done this, there were three of them, six months ago. So two of them have gone away. There's one left that hasn't been absorbed, but it's under contract, so there's really nothing in this size range available today. There's nothing in our market, other than stuff down in the 30s, 40s, 50,000 square foot size. So that's kind of where we're at. I think it's just a great play. It's the finish of the park.
Mr. Kearns, in order for you start this project?
Yes.
We would have to rule, Rule 4 here?
No.
No, we don't want Rule 4.
No. We don't need Rule 4 today. We want to let this go three readings. We'll be able, our timing will work out just right if you approve it on the third reading.
Okay.
So that's what Bob was trying to tell you earlier, is it's fine. We would like it to have time to soak in the market. We're not, not that we don't want to start on August 15th, because, I mean, we're on contracts. I mean, we're not, we're not fooling around. I mean, we've written a contract for a metal building for more than a million dollars. So, you know, we, we're spending money. I mean, we're like P.O.s, but, you know, all that, all that stuff can get cleaned up if it don't go through. You just, but that's what you got to do to fast-track. This is what we would call fast-track project. We have to really run at it to get it started on time. Once it's started, it's normal construction. It's not going to be anything wild, wanted stuff.
Tom, I got a quick question. Is there anything similar in size already built in Fremont, like the can plant?
So you mean, is there a comparable building?
Yeah.
Yeah. So comparable buildings, if you think of, let's say, the distribution center that's in Bar Creek, if you drive around the corner on Bar Creek Drive there, that's 140,000 square feet. The biggest building in Bar Creek, other than the tank plant, is 140,000 square feet. So that's a comparable. Stylecrest Manufacturing Plant, just the 600 acre drive plant, is about 91,000 square feet. So them are comparable. So like at Stylecrest, that building has nearly 200 people working in it. So that's the potential for a building this size, is to have a couple hundred employees in a building this size. It would not be, would not be unusual to have 200 employees in a building this size. So we'll see what we get. I mean, you can't make promises, because you don't, if you don't have the customer, you don't have the customer. So, you know, but I think it's a great opportunity. I think you got good people going to do it, and I think it'll work out for us.
Well, thank you for your involvement.
So, yeah, and I appreciate you guys' support and all that sort of stuff.
I think that they will come.
So we're looking forward to seeing what we can do with it. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tom. Real quick, I'm going to have Beth Hanlon come up. She helps to lead, so she needed a little pad on some of the leads.
Yep.
Good evening.
Hi.
I just want to add that having a developer like Janata and Turner and Tom with KMH, this is such an excellent opportunity for the City of Fremont, for the Fremont Development Group. A lot of communities would die to have a developer that's willing to take that risk on, because it really is taking on a risk, although I think that this is really going to end up being fruitful at the end of the day, because like Tom said, we really, in Sandusky County, we have had that size come on and off, but they usually go off the market pretty quickly.
Pretty quickly, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we've had a couple.
We've had a couple of them in the last couple of years.
And they have not lasted long, like in the last, I would say, two months, and they're gone already, so.
You've had a couple right here, right here with a 43420 address on them, that have moved really quickly here.
Yeah, so it's just, it's just an awesome.
It's a dry market right now. The market's pretty dry.
Yeah. I wanted to give you a little insight. This is just from, this is a report that we got from Jobs Ohio, they're the state economic development arm, and they provided some data for us. This is just for quarter one. We don't have the rest of the data for quarter two yet. But out of the 17 of the quarter one site searches, preferred in existing building that compared to sites, so think of sites that don't have anything on them, like HP Young right now, right? 65% of those preferred a building compared to just the site. So when I think about HP Young and what we've submitted so far year-to-date, Sandusky County Economic Development, when Jobs Ohio comes out with leads, we look at it to see if there's a building or site that meets their criteria. For HP Young, so far this year, we've submitted that 11 times. We've had 36 total between buildings and sites that we've submitted from around the county, but 11 have been specifically for HP Young. Can you imagine if we have a building on there, how many more times we would be able to submit that? Because sometimes they're very clear, they want an existing building, not just the site, even if it's site-ready. So I just thought, just a couple things, I wanted to come up real quickly and share that information. Like I said, I think it's an awesome thing, and thank Tom and his group for, for wanting to do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all for Beth.
Well, that constitutes the first reading of that resolution. Anybody have any reports in their committees? So we'll skip those. Department heads, Bob Gross.
Real quick, I know it's, we're going to have a few things, but I wanted to, I just want to take a few moments. You know, it's easy to be negative, right? It's easy to get caught up in social media and hear the criticism from those that maybe don't know the full scope of things that are going on. And so it really is a challenge to look at your community and realize, you know, there's a lot of special things happening here. And I kind of alluded to it last time, and then Mayor Sanchez challenged me, and we were just talking about it, we got to get these stories out there, and then we need to do a better job of getting them out there, because there are some really amazing things happening in our community over the next 18 to 24 months, and you guys are a part of that. You should be commended. Other than not suspending Rule 4 on items one and two, you should be commended for anything else. But we're not in this position, if in August of '22, you guys aren't voting on that economic development agreement. You aren't here if you haven't voted on the annexation for the land or the zone. So you guys deserve the credit for this, along with Mayor Sanchez, and just putting this team together. Not one person is spinning this wheel. Tonight is an example, and we all play very different roles, and those roles have cohesively been brought together. And I remember shortly when Mayor Sanchez first ran, there was a phrase, "Together we can." I, you know, I was like, okay, that sounds like a cheesy phrase, but it seems to be working, and okay, we got to work together. And I'm a little bit of a doubting Thomas, and so it's like seeing is believing. Well, over the years, I look at some of our best projects we've had go on in Fremont, and they've been collaborative projects, from the Ampl Theater with the Rotary Group, to the Quanis Play Park, to this industrial park. You can just look at some of the best things we've accomplished in this community. They've been a great combination of nonprofit with government entity, private sector meets public sector, and we've figured out how to make it work. And so I think we're at a key point, and I alluded to some of these things at the last meeting, but I wanted to give you the totality of the list. Do you know we're staring at $57 to $58 million worth of new investment in our community in the next 18 to 24 months? In excess of 200 jobs. And so I'll just go through the list, because, you know, I think Bob might be talking silly there, I don't know if he can back that up. Well, here's, here's some of the numbers. So we know the credit union's building their new headquarters. So we know the credit union's building their new headquarters at a cost of $13 million. County EMS, that's at $11 million. The apartments, $4 million. You've got Tom and what they're doing with Sunset Meadows and Meadow Creek and, you know, I think Tom told me one time over the next 24 months, maybe $2 million a year worth of houses. So you got.
Right. That's about what there is, huh?
You got the new hotel going in on 53 at a cost of $13 million. You just heard the cost of Tom's spec building somewhere between 6.2 to 7. You know, if you haven't been by Potter Village, Sheetz Motors has, Janad and Her, they're going pretty busy in there. And that's a one and a half to $2 million project. You've got Friendship Sanoco, that's getting excited. If you haven't heard, so I've heard this rumor that, I'm going to get off track here, Friendship, I heard this rumor that Friendship Sanoco has great chicken.
I've heard that.
Has anybody else heard that?
Offer all forms.
I'm not one against gas stations, so I want to try it. And sure enough, that was a great chicken sandwich I had last week at Friendship Sanoco in Sandusky. So then you got ABC Supply that bought the old Journeys. That's about $1.5, $2 million.
What about Journeys?
ABC Supply. It's a.
It's a building supply company.
Building supply company.
Yeah, they sell roofing and siding and, you know, extra finishing materials for homes primarily, but some commercial as well.
And then we were here, Rob and Andrew Burkett, they annexed their property and rezoned it and they're looking at $3.5 million of new apartments there. And when you total that up, $57, $58 million estimated to be invested in this community in the next 18 months. That's astonishing. And we should see construction happening all over this community over the next 18 months. That investment amount, those stories I told you, doesn't include any demo costs. Demoling some slum of lighted properties, that alone makes a big improvement. And it doesn't include projects not get announced because there are always projects that are being talked about and projects hoping to be announced. And by the time we start saying this, you can't talk about it till the ink's on the paper. So we're hoping there will be even more announcements throughout the year. But when you add up those investment costs and you add up the 23 jobs at the hotel and the additional 30 jobs potentially at the credit union, EMS, Friendship Sanoco, ABC Supply, you know, that's in excess of 200 jobs needed for in this community. And that's great for a community who's 80% of your general fund runs off income tax dollars. So this is big and I think it's a domino effect. I think people, in fact, I wish Tucker was here because we met with a company, I'll just say it, which we all know, we had a pre-construction meeting with the group that's building the new Wendy's. Do you want to say more? And on the way here, they were like, we were driving through your town and I hadn't been to Fremont in a while. You guys got, you know, there's lots of change. You have some things going on. You've been busy around here. And I thought, that made me feel good to hear some out of towner who hadn't been here in a while say that. So I kind of want to summarize that because it's easy to gloss over those projects because you haven't seen the construction happen yet, but it's kind of, and it's easy to get caught up on the negativity of things that happen. But I just feel like it's our job as leaders to kind of remind the public, like whatever criticism there are, or there is or can be, because there's always negatives and you can't avoid it, you know, let's balance that out because there are some really amazing things happening here and we need to recognize it. You know, I think the best part of this is we're, you know, we're sticking to a plan. When you have a plan, you stick to it. And that was our plan in 2020. When we sat down and launched the Fremont plan and let's go find some land, we had set in five years from now, we want an industrial park with a spec building. And here we are in 2025 with announcement that hopefully in the next 30, 40 days, shovel in the ground and we will get the spec building in our new industrial park. But I just wanted to share those comments and those thoughts with you because I know you guys are out in the public and, you know, people you know share their thoughts with you and it's just, I always love to arm you with information. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam President. I was trying to take in all of Bob was saying and I think really there's a lot of truth behind that when you start to look at and you think about the future. But over the weekend, this past weekend, I drove through town. There was a, to talk about some of the other projects, things that we've been working on at Council South with is, we got a grant several years ago to build a new ballpark. But there was a large youth, young lady softball tournament down at Roger Young Park. The park was packed. Came down Front Street, Garrison had Jamie leasing outside the Garrison and there was a nice crowd outside the Garrison. Went across the street to the Ample Theater. There was a nice band, nice crowd after the Ample Theater. Drove up the street to St. Joe and they had a crowd. Made my way out to the racetrack. The racetrack was packed. Drove around the hotels, even the ones outside of the city, and they were packed with out of town plates, out of state plates. I met out of county plates and out of state plates. So I said, man, you know, I didn't stop at all of those events just because it was a busy Saturday and I just really wanted to drive by and just take it all in. At the same time, I was looking at all the weeds that growing up on State Street and down Front Street and figuring out how we were going to get that cleaned up Monday when I got back to work. So it's good to talk about all the good things, but we still got to remember the things that need to be cleaned up. So I tried to take it all into perspective. So and then Monday morning, when I got to work, I looked at the police logs to see how the police department, what kind of weekend they had. I always try to check in. I check in with the chief or the fire chief just to see what our officers went through, just to see how they're doing. I try to call the chiefs very often to just make, to just check on the officers and the firemen, see how things are going. But there was the calls for service that they had were any higher than they would have any other weekend. I mean, to have all of those people in town, people behaved and it was just a nice, good, and it just reminds me, I didn't see any bar fight calls. I didn't see anything that would, you know, that you might see when you have people out drinking and frequenting different places. And I just didn't see, and it was just nice to know. It's a reminder that for the most part, you can walk anywhere in this community and have a good time and experience a negative situation. You can have something happen anywhere. So I think that Together We Can is working.
It is. I'll admit that's working.
It's still cheap.
I'm buying that.
But you remember it.
Well, since you're on that topic, have we had vandalism issues in the parks like we had in the past?
We haven't.
I don't see any.
We haven't. I cannot, right now, I couldn't tell you the last one we had, so I don't even know how old it was. It could happen, but I just stay on the parks, council.
Okay. I got it.
But also to say, I would ask all of you council members, just to remind you, to go on the Fremont, the city of the Fremont Recreation website page and then take a look at the community calendar of all of the programs in the parks that we've implemented this year. And if you get some time, try to stop over to one of these programs. There's so many different programs happening with, as we talk about this big economic development push that we've been making and we talk about the safety and the first responder situation that we're trying to address, we talk about the tourism, we also talk about retaining people here in the city. Kristi Bielker's done an amazing job all summer. I know last year people were like, well, there's hardly anybody going to these events. What was the first year, you know, trying to get that information out, marketing. Movie nights are growing, concerts are growing, car shows are booming. There's a farmer's, there was a farmer's market two weeks ago. That was booming, you know, so things are happening. You just got to get out to see them. Some updates on some construction projects. You're going to see the Prospect Sewer Project taking place. So on the east side, you see that the east side of Fremont has got some cones up over there off of State Street. There's going to be a project coming up soon with the High Street Sewer Separation. And then Dickinson Street is complete, looks much better. And also the next phase of paving should start hopefully by the end of August to hit those streets on the east side of town. And then also getting down in your neck of the woods to get that project going, which is going to be nice down there as well. So a lot of things happening. Thank you, Madam President. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Jim Melli?
I have nothing.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come up and speak? So come to the podium and give your name and address?
I don't have to know where I live, but I don't need to. I just have a couple of questions. My grandson plays baseball at the park over here at Roger, right? And their, all the games are being canceled all the time and the diamonds are being flooded out, okay? And I don't know how we can prevent it. And I understand that the rain comes hard and it, rain, you know, causes problems. But there's other places, you know, other communities that don't have the flooding in their diamonds, okay? And they can have the games right after, right after a rain. And ours are being, not taken care of very well supposedly, by my opinion. That's my opinion. And our scoreboards don't work at all. And I don't know who I take that of, but I know you tell me I take all my things up to these people and I'm not supposed to take them to other people, so.
Tell them what you want.
Well, last time I was here, you told me I had to take it to zoning.
Well, I said, try to address the department head.
Right.
Before you come to a council meeting.
So you'd probably be the rest of them.
Right. So that'd be the rest of them.
Well, I have and, you know, they said that the scoreboards for years have been broke and they're not fixed or.
Yeah, we have a sponsor. They usually seek out sponsors for the scoreboard. I know a few years ago, in fact, Bob Gross and I were able to get Amp Energy, uh, Amp, not Amp, Amp to sponsor the scoreboard.
Yeah, in 2017, Amp Energy bought Roger Young. Those four new scoreboards are at the Lauer complex in the middle of Dallas.
Yeah, they don't work.
So I don't know if they have been working. But in reference to the fields, yeah, I mean, I don't have an answer you're probably going to like, I guess. The diamonds up the fields are.
Just a hint.
Right.
And I'm normal of it. Not the usual.
I mean. But I mean, there was, I mean, we had the rain and there was teams from here going to Clyde to play in their field because their field could handle it. And I'm not, I'm not trying to compare. I'm just telling you what the fact was there that I was the one. So.
I don't recall in the past the diamonds ever being flooded. Do you?
Well, so anytime there's a large amount of rain, I will tell you this. I don't have the answer that they're going to be canceled if the fields are flooded. I mean, that's just the answer.
The safety is too.
Yeah, that's the answer. I don't, what's that?
Is there a, I mean, does parks have a budget to take care of these things, like the scoreboards or whatever, or the, you know, maybe they could put some.
They do have a budget and they do maintain the fields. Yeah, I mean, I'm just, when it rains, they just.
Well, is there any way that we could put some drainage in to help, you know?
Not at this time.
Well, I don't mean tonight or tomorrow.
No, not even in the next year or two. All this stuff, it's not, these people right now for the budget. It's not in our, it's not in any plans to do so.
Well, I just bring it up, you know.
No, I, thank you for bringing it up.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
If there's nothing further.
Wait, I just want to bring this up.
Okay.
It's the meeting in the park, July 29th at Berkshire Park. So it just says, "Join us at Berkshire Park for a public meeting with Thomas Porter Architects and city officials to explore concept, art, and share ideas for the future of Berkshire Park." So I encourage especially residents in that area to come to that meeting and share your ideas and opinions.
I think everybody that comes to that park, because I don't live there, but I still bring my kids there.
You can come.
So that was a cornerstone in my childhood, so.
And there's a, yeah, there's a media post going out tomorrow to invite folks. If you remember, we're under contract with Thomas Porter Architects and there's been a Berkshire Park Improvement Group of people that live in and around the park, kind of giving input. And so despite what you've been hearing, because I think you recently saw an email where there was going to be 60 trees cut down, there's only 60 trees in there. I talked with our park superintendent that seven dead trees were taken down. There are seven more dead trees remaining that they're planning to get to. Chris is on this committee, so he can attest preserving as many trees as possible is really a large part of this planning. In fact, trying to have a net gain of trees, so whatever, how many trees have to be removed, it is our intent to plant too. So, you know, so I think if everybody from the public who maybe is hearing things or just come to this meeting, Thomas Porter Architects is going to have renderings. They're just concepts. We kind of have given them some feedback and said, here is a blank slate, go come up with some stuff. I don't think we're talking any radical changes. I think we're talking new playground equipment, new restrooms, new shelter house. At one point, there was a path, a walking path through there. I think we're talking about reinstituting that walking path and putting some sidewalks on the perimeters. I think that is really, in a quick synopsis, maybe some lighting, you know, and so if you hear any of, if you hear anything of any radical changes, those are not true. I just don't think, you know, that's just, we know what the park is and we're not trying to, you know, I think the goal of this committee has really been, you know, that park has served Fremont so well over the last several decades, we owe it to the next generation of people that live in this community to have a nice park and preserve that for them. And that really is our intent on making these improvements. But that's it.
You can shoot at Berkshire Park and make a basketball.
Has anybody heard anything on the end that were, I live there, is anybody heard any development on that back there? Yeah? Or any? No, I bet his property, Victor, has he done anything, put any?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I second.
Roll call. Bible?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Creator?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Addie?
Yes.
Okay.
Bye.